No, on the way to the elephants, Kenny Monk.
Wait, what?
The elephants.
On the air.
On the air. Welcome everyone to the Town of Wells Planning Board meeting for Monday, November 3rd. The first item for discussion this evening will be to review the minutes of October 20th. Did anyone have any questions, additions, or deletions to page one, two, three, four, five, or six?
Make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous, the minutes have been accepted as written. The next item on the agenda this evening is public hearings. How we conduct our public hearings is we allow the applicant, their representative, to come forward, tell the board and the public and the people at home what they propose to do. Once the applicant is done presenting their project, you have the opportunity to question the applicant through the board. Once the public hearing is closed, there'll be no further comments tonight. You can correspond with the Office of Planning and Development. So the first item this evening for the public hearings would be Goodyell subdivision. Would they like to come forward, please? Welcome. And for the record, would you like to tell everybody at home and here who you are?
My name's Peter Goodyell and I'm doing a small subdivision up in Green Brook Lane. And basically I've been working at this for a while.
Just tell people how many lots you plan on and things of that nature, please.
Well, my lot is considered one lot, so then there's two lots. And then the remaining land has been thrown in as a fourth lot. So it's a total of four lots, but it really isn't a fourth lot, it's just a 35 acre piece.
Okay. Any other comments at all? Is there any questions from anyone in the audience?
Yes.
Come to the podium, state your name, please, and...
Robert Brooks, I own 1121. The Green Brook Lane runs along my boundary line here and across the back. Is that area being paved for this subdivision? Or a future subdivision?
I don't believe it has to be now, it's all, it's really up to all the homeowners that live on that, is that right, man?
Uh, well, the, the current number of lots that are on Green Brook Lane, uh, the next building per- will, permit will require pavement. Uh, but that's with the lots that are currently on Green Brook Lane. Um, the four new lots are on, proposed to be on a different road, uh, but that road does tie in the Green Brook Lane. So the board does have to consider whether to require pavement of that because your four lots will be using Green Brook Lane also. So it is a planning board decision yet to be made?
That is a concern for my lot. My lot is downhill from this property. And my well, is a dug well at 75 feet from the edge of that driveway of the road. So any pavement on that will push every bit of water into my backyard.
And so you're worried about it getting paved versus staying gravel?
Yes.
Any other comments, sir?
How many more, um, lots are gonna be subdivided eventually? All of this traffic, all this traffic here comes right down and shines in the back of my house, right in the back windows. There is some regrowth there, but I still, this time of year, I get headlights in the back of the house, in the back windows. Bedroom, kitchen, all of that. So my concern is how many more house lots we want out there? How much more traffic is gonna be using that road?
At this point, I believe you're doing, what, four more lots?
Um, well, that's a, I'm only, I'm living there now, I'm only actually doing two.
Okay.
We, we can only consider what the plan is showing.
Yeah, and I know it's showing another lot, but that's not, not gonna do a 35 acre lot.
The, the 35 acres remaining land is part of this subdivision approval.
Right.
So it is a total of four lots being approved. One has your existing home on it.
Right.
And the three vacant lots.
That's because you may be doing that. Right?
That's, that's, you know, state law is part of subdivision.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I understand, yeah.
So that is a concern of yours, we will duly note it.
Good.
Anything else, sir?
Not at this time.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from anyone else in the audience? Please come to the podium and state your name.
Hello, my name's Chris Goodyell, um, me and my daughter own this lot here. And my cousin Pete, he was a right of way to it years ago. And, um, it's come to our attention, as Mike was saying, that the next person that applies for a building permit will be required to pave it. And also, there's, there's two remaining lots in it, and this would be the other one. So either one of us would be required to pave it if we were to get approved. But my only problem is if, if you approve this without it being paved, that means somebody else can drive up it without it being paved. There isn't even, you know, they could get approval and we couldn't, that doesn't seem fair to me. You know, we, my daughter was saving up to build there, right now she would be denied. But the, uh, the next on this subdivision, if you approve it, somebody else can come along, can get approved and still drive up the same dirt road, that doesn't make any sense to me. You know, I'm wondering, there's a law or a rule that you guys made, and it has to do with the number of houses before you pave it. It totally, totally contradicts that law that you have. Well, when more people drive up it without it being paved, but us and them can't. And that's my only problem, I just think we should come up with a way to get it paved.
Mike, can you answer his question as far as what requirements are needed to pave for?
Yes, it's, it's based on the lots that use the road for street frontage. Um, so the, the subdivision approval before the board is for four lots on, on this parcel. And for those four lots, it's proposing a new road, so it has a different name, it's not the same as Green Brook Lane. So when you look at those road standards, this road is only required to be 26 foot gravel. But when you add up the other lots that are gonna use, that currently use Green Brook Lane, and you add those lots to it, it would trigger pavement of Green Brook Lane all the way down. Um, even the lots, as I said, that currently have street frontage on Green Brook Lane, you know, as you said, the next building permit triggers this to be paved. Green Brook Lane, it is owned by the owner of the subdivision, and it's part of the subdivision approval. So that's what allows the planning board to make a decision on whether this needs to be paved now.
Right, but it still makes no sense in my book, you're gonna allow other people to drive up it.
These lots, these lots weren't sold, hell, as a subdivision, they were sold every five years. They were sold over a period of quite a few years. And there was nothing said then about, everything had to be paved. I basically just gave people right of ways, I built the road to Townes Beck's with the gravel and everything, and it went, but...
Four up to five lots?
Yeah, five.
Cause they, there, there's a, there's a town road ordinance that you have to abide by.
I don't know if that even existed when I started out.
Yep, it, it was, it did not change, it's been the same since 1994. So when these lots were created by, by division, they'd not go through planning board for any type of approval, but as you create lots on a private street, the road construction standards increase based on the number of lots to use it. Um, so at five lots, it only has to be 26 foot gravel, which I think is what's out there. Um, and at one point, there was a turnkey established, approved by the fire department, you know, for a turnaround, cause that's another standard that has to be met. But additional lots have been divided off since then, that would trigger a higher road standard. Uh, and the road standards have been in existence since 1994. There were road standards before that, but the current ones that would apply to any of the lots you created, um, have been the same since 1994. So as soon as you created a sixth and a seventh lot, um, that triggers the need to pave the road. So it, with the old ordinance, it's 30 foot wide gravel base with a 20 foot width of pavement. But because there's no approval process for a private street, it's just, you know, becomes known when someone comes in for a building permit. Um, the town has no regulations that, that, you know, would regulate when that lot gets conveyed, there's some trigger. You know, we don't have permitting for when lots get sold. Um, but when people come in for building permits, that's when the code office has to look at it and determine if the street is a legal street to meet the street frontage requirement.
Well, for me, going back to my original problem, is right now, us and them, if we were to apply for a building permit, we would be denied. Nope, you gotta pave the road. And we could sit there and watch another person apply for building permit, yep, you can drive up the same road, dirt road. And then we could apply again, nope, gotta pave it. And the second person could come along and say, and get approved if you approve this for a building, drive up the same dirt road, that just makes no sense to me, that's all I could say. Hopefully, we can come up with a way to pave it if that's what needs to be done.
Thank you.
Actually, I had a, I had a loophole when I built my house anyway, by the code enforcement, to put that house there. And they knew all this was going on. But I had a loophole because I'd owned that property and some loophole that Jodeen found, said, yes, you can build that.
Well, you, well, you're, you're the fifth.
Yeah.
So the, the lots that have homes on it right now are the ones labeled on this in green. So there was lots one, two, three, and four, and yours that all have houses on it. So five, five houses is the 26 foot wide gravel. As soon as you get to that sixth and seventh house is what triggers the pavement. So building your house was fine, cause that's still the fifth. So up to five dwellings using that road is the 26 foot gravel, which is what you have out there. It's as soon as you get to number six and seven is what triggers the, the upgrade in the road and the pavement. So that, that's why you were able to get a building permit on your house, cause it's still only the fifth.
And, and the two lots that he's subdividing out that he wants to build on, that's gonna be eight and nine, right? Then, they're not gonna be able to just build right away?
Well, well, those are on a different road. They, they used, they empty out in the Green Brook Lane, but they're on a different road with a different name. But, but everything is part of...
They still feed that same road, that's a feeder road, there's no choice, so eight, nine wouldn't be able to do it either. Because, because five is already, is part of it, he's just dividing five off and putting two more units in there.
Right, and that's what the planning board has to consider when looking at if Green Brook Lane has to be upgraded or not. Cause once you, you know, give a subdivision approval for four lots on the new road, Green Brook Lane still has more than five that would utilize that.
So what you're saying, no matter what happens, Green Brook has to be paved?
It really, either way you look at it, whether it's the, whether it's the division that's occurred, you know, without planning board approval, you know, seven, you know, six lots, seven lots, triggers pavement. Certainly, as part of the subdivision approval, that would be more lots using this as well. I mean, even the existing lots on it trigger pavement. And a building permit's been submitted on this lot, it's been put on hold because the road is not paved. There's no building permit on this lot submitted, uh, but again, it would be put on hold or denied based on the street not meeting street standards.
And we could make that condition of the approval for the subdivision is that the road has to be paved?
Yep.
Before any building permits are issued?
Exactly.
Yep.
And how that happens would be between the people who have rights to the road, so, you know...
I was gonna say, I shouldn't be responsible for all that. Those lots, those lots at the time, they were sold, they weren't sold for the kind of money that's, you know, you're gonna get out on the pavement.
The planning board...
And build the road and, and everything else, they just weren't, so, you know, not, not to, you know, what you're getting for a lot now. It's not even close.
So the planning board can, as part of your approval, have a condition that this road has to be paved. Um, however, the lot owners divide that up is between the lot owners and you that have, you know, rights to the road. Uh, but the planning board certainly can, within the ordinance, require Green Brook Lane to be paved prior to a building permit being issued on any of those lots.
Yes, sir.
In 1996, the state of Maine passed a law that, uh, you can't excavate near, uh, within 200 feet of a dug well. And in order to pave that, that would need excavation. And my well is 75 feet, so it's, there's no way you can pave that and excavate to pave it without affecting my well.
I'm, I'm not familiar with that state statute at all, if you can...
I can give you the number for it.
And, and grading the road for pavement wouldn't be considered excavation?
Grading the road is, um, leveling the road is part of excavation.
Wouldn't be considered...
For state regulations.
So here, in order to maintain the gravel road, you would have to grade it anyway. So I, I, I hate to say this to you, but I, I, I have a feeling you're wrong.
I would get the law, the number for the law.
Any other questions or comments from people in the public?
Yes, uh, my name is Chuck Devine, and I have, uh, one of the lots, I think it was lot six over here, but, uh, we first looked at it last year as it was advertised, uh, very nicely in Zillow as a place where we would really wanna go and build. Um, did our due diligence through our buyer broker, through the town, to see if there were any red flags. And, uh, kinda got the green light that buy, go buy the land. Uh, you know, it was advertised as a great place to build on. And then, uh, and then we didn't see any red flags through going through the town. And, uh, then in July, we found out about the whole thing about the paving. And it kinda caught us by surprise as we were getting into the process to try to build. Uh, I guess what I'm trying to find out, a few things. So first off, from what I'm hearing in the conversation, it sounds like, uh, even though this new road is going to be built, the fact that one road is going into the other road means that six ho-, uh, even though one home will have five roads and one road will have fewer than five, that paving is still going to be required for the one with the five roads, is that correct? Uh, the one with, the road with the five homes, is that correct?
Yes.
That's to be determined by the...
Well, it's to be determined by the planning board tonight because the statute states that it should be.
Okay, um, is there any precedent for something like this happening in the past where, where, you know, uh, somebody buying land and wanting to build has triggered paving? Uh, whether it be, and, and, you know, how, how have people gone about it in the past? I mean, I hate to be the neighbor that comes in and says, you know, we all gotta pony up.
You have to remember, he's the, he's the third owner of that lot too, so he's not the first guy buying it.
And, and like I said, we, we, we paid pretty well for it, and it was pretty much a surprise seven months after we made the purchase.
I believe you've run into this before.
Oh, yes, and, and that's part of the issue with not having an approval process within the town for approving private streets. And that's something the planning board will be looking at in the future. As an ordinance changed, it probably created an approval process for that. But it's come up in the past, um, we even had a case on Jeffords Way that went to the zoning board of appeals. And the zoning board of appeals upheld the street ordinance that someone had created a lot, the road standards weren't considered, and that person could not get a building permit until the road was upgraded. So it has been vetted in the past with the board of appeals case, and, and, uh, the street ordinance is the street ordinance. So when someone creates a lot on a private street, um, that street has to meet the street ordinance at the time the building permit is issued.
So, I guess, I guess the, the issue I have is that, um, you don't find these things out until you get into the permitting process. You can't, even, even if you make an attempt to try to find out prior.
Yeah, no, that's exactly right. Yeah, it is a, you know, it's a, it's a legally created lot, it meets zoning. So the basic, you know, answer to a question on zoning is, yeah, it's a buildable lot.
Yeah, but, but Mike, isn't, isn't, this is all in the, the subdivision approval? Right, this is, was all listed in the subdivision approval when this, uh, when this original subdivision was approved?
Well, it was, it's, it's never been an approved subdivision, it's been divisions.
Been division of lots, every five years, you don't have to go through it, that's one of the reasons that, that's not a great idea.
Several lots were, several lots were family members first, other than that, they waited every five years and divided a lot, so it's, it's never been the planning board for approval.
Technically, it's the way to get around a sub, going through subdivision. Creates problems when you do it that way. Man, that's a long road, how long is that road?
Eighteen hundred feet, go to the corner.
How much, Steve?
It's a lot of money.
It, it's probably worth more, more than he ever got paid for the lots.
Yep.
I mean, it wouldn't even be worth building it, that, at today's, that's why they do clusters, cause it'd be so expensive to build.
But even the seven lots that were created would have triggered the pavement.
Yep.
Going through subdivision or not.
Right.
Yeah, back then, they would have, A, it would have been a lot cheaper to build because, and the price of the lots would have been lower. But, but now you're at a expensive lot and expensive speed up. Road, I mean, that's a long road.
Yeah, eighteen hundred feet.
Sadly, you have a lot that is not permissible for building permit at this point in time.
It makes me wonder, you know, the last two times that the lot was, uh, you know, that, that's gone through two, two other buyers prior to us, now that I'm learning, you know, is that, is that the same reason they bailed on it? I mean, we, we're feeling stuck.
That would probably be, that would probably be a...
No, my, my cousin owned it first.
I owned it first, and I had no idea of this until, um,
Last week.
Last week, and the, and...
And I own, I'm next to him.
She owned the other lot, so we're in the same void, you and I, we had no idea. I think the problem, the person...
And I share your frustration that this isn't something that is, like, well-known. Like, why isn't this a well-known thing?
Going back to what he was saying, this, I mean, a common person looks at this and just says, this is all one road, any way you slice it, we can change the name. I would have been fine with it all dirt if all was just gonna be built, I'm not like, trying to say no to the subdivision, I just don't think it's fair, allow others...
It's a whole one person responsible when ten people are gonna drive down.
When you're allowing others to build on it. Doesn't make any sense in any way to me, that's all I'm saying.
Do any of you guys have an idea what eighteen hundred feet would cost to pave? Yeah, I know what it would cost, but I'm not gonna say.
No, go ahead and say it, I mean, you're in the business.
Give them an idea.
Give them an idea.
You're in the business, how much is it a foot?
So, I, I mean, depending on, depending on what you, depending on the condition of the road now and what you have to do, you're looking between sixty and a hundred thousand.
In some, a lot of the road has to be widened to thirty foot gravel base, too, it's not just the cost of the pavement. Most of the gravel road is twenty-six foot.
It's quite a lot, it's just that, it has, it has some growth growing on the surface. I could easily take, I could take a loader and scrape that up and saw, saw, saw the gravel. It's, it's stone base, it's good, it's good base, it's good base.
I mean, on a sidewalk, the gravel looks, looks welcome back.
Yeah.
It's just, I, I don't think there's thirty feet the whole way.
Do, do neighbors, uh, become obligated to become part of this, or they, can they, uh, can they turn it down and say, no, we don't want this?
You, yeah, you don't have the option of saying, or the planning board doesn't have the option either of saying it can't be paved.
We were told that there were no zoning restrictions. We asked our realtor, we have it in writing, our realtor asked the zoning committee, are there any strange things, I don't wanna be surprised? And he said, no, go ahead, build.
I mean, to get that answer and whether, you know, you get a building permit, you have to file a building permit to get that exact answer.
Yeah, but they had to buy the lot for it.
So you have to buy land that may be unusable?
You can get a building permit while buying the lot.
So you have to buy land to do a building permit, so you have to buy land you may not be able to use.
You, you can get a building permit on a purchase and sale, so you can enter into a purchase and sales agreement contingent on getting a building permit.
That is why our realtor asked.
And, and as I said, it's a, it's a conforming lot of record. So it is buildable, but of course, had a, had a cost of upgrading the road.
Yeah, that, that, that's something that should be in Zillow, at the very beginning. And then it's something that should be brought up at, at the time, I mean, there, there are only a certain amount of private roads in Wells, Maine, and, you know, it's, it's tough for someone who lives in Vermont who wants to move to, you know, to, to know all these things. I'm, I'm, you know, I can't get the book out and, you know, find out about all these situations as much as I'd like to.
I, I honestly think most the people that live on that road would chip in to get it paved.
Yeah, and that's early...
I can't say for sure everybody was, I think, you know.
Yeah, we would.
And that's early an option, probably the fair option, is to have everyone share the cost.
You don't have an association, so to speak, but everybody's a neighbor. I mean, you could all get together and get a quote on what it would cost.
Who's responsible for road maintenance?
There's a road, road maintenance agreement, I, I do it, just cause I have, I have equipment, so I allow the road.
Is there a road maintenance agreement?
Yep, I keep the road up, and I do it for nothing, basically.
Three of the lots have a road maintenance agreement, reference in the deed, the others do not.
So, so the ones that are gonna be hooked for it, a hundred percent of the three on the maintenance agreement?
Yeah.
Well, they're, they're supposed to get together once a year and vote on maintenance cost and any improvements. And it has to be a super majority to, to approve road improvements. So I don't know how that would...
Well, I'd be, I'd easily, if I need a load, I'd go to everybody and I, they get, they get like a hundred dollars on everybody. And they drop a load off and, you know, fix the road and it's, and everybody chips in.
So I think everybody should get together and see if they wanna or not want, but get a quote on what it would cost to do the road. Obviously, you're gonna help as well because you've got an interest at the other end of the road.
Yeah, I, I mean, well, I'd chip in too.
And then these poor people can get a building permit. And the other lot owner can get a building permit.
Well, I could be wrong, but I think they can anyway, because they're only the fifth, right?
No, you were.
You're the fifth.
Huh?
You're the fifth, cause you you feed off the road.
No, I'm not there anymore.
Yeah, you are, you're still there.
Your your new house was the fifth.
Right, right.
So the lots in green.
Well, if you approve my subdivision, like.
Until we improve your subdivision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're on the overboard.
That goes back to my initial question though, if you approve his subdivision, he puts in the road, that's, he becomes part of his road. We're on our road, so we're one of five now, and then he's gonna be one of four, is that correct or?
So no, so you're you're getting ahead of, because we 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 still have to make a discussion and determination about the conditions required for his subdivision approval. So, you know, there's there's a lot of supposition as to what that might be, but uh, until until we discuss it and vote on it, there isn't anything yet said.
The the street ordinance, does it say street or 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 housings or houses?
It says the current ordinance, the one that just got adopted more recently.
Yep.
Says lots that utilize it for street frontage purposes.
For only for street frontage?
Yeah, yeah, the older ordinance, when these lots were created, just says, um, lots that use the street. It's not specific to street frontage, but that's the only difference.
It should never have been changed then. Right, cause you're making a new street and taking liability away from the from the person that's created the issue.
But as you know, as part of a subdivision, one of the requirements is that the streets in the subdivision have to meet section two oh one ten. And, you know, the the land under Greenbrook Lane is all owned, you know, together with the subdivision land. So Greenbrook Lane is land that's part of the subdivision approval. It's all contiguous ownership.
Greenbrook Lane is owned by the applicant for the subdivision.
Correct.
Correct?
So it is part of the subdivision, even though it's already existing and lots were created off it before. Uh, the applicant owns the interest of the land underneath the road, so that makes it part of the subdivision approval.
The new subdivision approval, because there isn't an approval for the existing property.
Correct, the the other, the lots can't be subject to subdivision approval, but the road can be.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, anyone in the public? Once we close the public hearing, there'll be no further comments from the public this evening, you can correspond with the office of planning and development. So I will ask the question again, any other further comments?
Um, yeah, I'll.
Please, come on.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Uh, yeah, I just wanna know, you know, and once again, you know, I'm asking about precedent, but what kind of a timeline we'll be looking at for something like this, you know, assuming that we get neighbors together promptly and come up with some sort of decisions or anything, but I guess what would I look at as the next events to happen over the next several months? And can something put us on that property in in twenty twenty-six?
Well, again, I guess I would ask Mike, if they had a contract to have the road paved, obviously, you're gonna run out of this year real quick. I mean, if it was a contract to pave in the spring, would you, would the office issue them a building permit, is what he's asking?
Well, that well, that gets to what the planning board would approve for performance guarantees. I mean, typically, you just put a condition on the plan saying that prior to any building permit of the subdivision lots, that the road has to be constructed. Uh, but that would mean that the road might not get paved until one of those lots get built on, which could be a long wait, no timeframe exact. Uh, performance guarantee could be that, you know, the funds are provided for the road upgrades and that it has to be completed prior to a certain deadline. Um, and then there's a performance guarantee of funds to make sure it gets done, uh, then a deadline could be set. But setting performance guarantees, we always look at that during the final review process. That could be an option is to take monies into escrow for the construction pavement of the road. Um, and set a deadline that it has to get done prior to a certain date.
So, house can go up before the road if, uh, performance is 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 approved?
Pretty soon, you're not gonna wanna pave anything.
Yeah, this this year's.
No, you're gonna, you're you're done in less than a month.
Yeah.
Usually, usually it's Thanksgiving, it's the end of it. Any other comments for any members in the audience, any members on the board?
Move we close the public hearing?
Is your second, all those in favor, this public hearing is now closed. We will workshop this later this evening, like right now, so you're more than welcome to sit here and listen to what goes on.
So, um, I think, Mike, what you need to do is is make the condition of the approval is that the road either has to be paved, but it has to be, as you mentioned, performance guarantees of when it's gonna be done. I know it's been a surprise to some of these people and it's, it was also a surprise to me the way you find out the way things worked out. But, um, I think that the, before any further building on the new subdivision happens, this road's gotta be paved.
And the board can consider that as one of the conditions of preliminary approval, is that, you know, we don't need the the exact language or performance guarantee set yet, but the board should give indication to the applicant that pavement is gonna be required and there will be conditions in the final approval of when that has to get done.
So is that something we can make a motion on tonight?
Yeah, I was gonna ask the board to, um, make a determination on the pavement requirement. Just so the applicant knows for the final application, that pavement has to be proposed. The applicant did already provide a proposed road maintenance agreement that included all the lots on both the new subdivision and the existing road. Um, and that's a good document to work with towards the final approval. Of course, it doesn't say who pays for what, and the board typically doesn't get into that, that's a civil matter between the parties.
Yeah.
Um, you can only just set that it has to be paved and then when.
So, you know, I think it's something that we'd wanna have paved and, um, you know, these people out front are prevented from doing anything until the road's paved, so he should be prevented from doing anything in the subdivision till that's paved. So I'll make that motion.
Second, is her second, all those in favor?
Hopefully can do that.
The two separate subdivisions.
I think I think you gotta ask the attorney then.
But that's the access to his lots.
Now, the the land under that road is part of the subdivision approval, the board absolutely has the right to require it to be paved.
So so he owns the road in Fisupol?
Yes.
Okay. That's a little bit different than definitely. I I think that we need to need to somehow not not put it that he can't do anything, but he, we gotta give him a deadline and 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 time to to make it so that the rest of the, you know, that the road gets paved at a certain deadline. I mean, you have to remember, when those lots are sold, they're probably sold for about forty-five to fifty thousand dollars apiece, that's it.
Or less.
Or less. And, um.
Originally.
Originally, yeah. So, um.
I I know we've run into problems before when we've tried to establish deadlines for paving, so.
Well, I'm, that's the second thing, I think that they need to put the money into an an escrow account before he starts working on the e- either the lot six build or the actual lots in the back. That way, there the money's there already. And then he can deal with the people on the road and get everybody to hand he up and go forward from there.
So, how would you frame that in a motion?
Cause the one we just had didn't.
That that might take a while, I mean, how how do I know who's gonna agree and who's gonna come right up with the money?
Well, ultimately, we're not gonna let you build it or anything without putting the road up to to standards to begin with, so. However, long it's gonna take is whether you're gonna come up with the money yourself or you're gonna come up with everybody to come in with you.
You know, the way I understand it is Goodell Lane is now a separate road.
But it it's a, you have a feeder road and you own Goodell Lane.
I know, but.
So, but because you own it and you're you're using it to access your property, it's still you're part of the sub, you're part of the division of that road, there's no doubt about it, you didn't turn that road over to those people.
How can I, someone's gotta, oh, and I can't like give every person a.
Yeah.
Yeah, HOA.
HOA Association, absolutely, that's how they usually do it, that's how they usually do it is an HOA. The HOA owns the road and the and the maintenance goes into the HOA. I don't know how to word that the right way, but I, you understand what I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying, yeah.
I mean, I, we wanna help the people on the road.
Yeah.
But again, there's probably one person on the road that I'm hearing that doesn't wanna pave it, so that's gonna be an issue for everybody else. But before they before they're gonna do, be able to do anything, it's gonna have to be paved, so I would I would structure it that if they're gonna move forward on the work on the house of the other one, there has to be a a bond or the pay, the escrow that already has the money in it.
So, um. Alright, so we wanna have, um, I guess the motion I'd make then is that, uh, prior to uh, any construction in the subdivision, um, we'd need to have.
Which subdivision?
Both. Both.
One of them's not a subdivision.
Well, or any of the any of the roads are butting the property.
We need to have, uh, a paving date, performance guarantees.
And an escrow account.
And an escrow account.
I don't fully agree with that.
Yeah.
Because at that point, you're, they gotta come up with the money to pave it.
Yep.
And they gotta come up with money to hold into the escrow account.
No, no, the escrow is the money to pay it.
Right, but again, the escrow goes to the town, right, so the town's holding it?
Yeah, the town's holding it.
So now you have you have to have the cost of the paving that town's holding, then they need to get the money to actually pave it. So until that money comes out of escrow, if they're trying to all organize their money, again, we're talking a hundred thousand dollars, not everyone has that sitting in a bank account doing nothing, regardless if it's split five ways, ten ways, whatever it is, it's a big chunk of money, so now you're asking them to actually go.
So instead of escrow, can we make it that the town, the town will hold the money and and make the payment?
I doubt that.
No, we we actually do that all day, if we're if we're given the funds, I mean, someone has to come up with a full amount to put in an escrow right away.
Yep.
But then, as long as that person that gave us the funds authorized us us to pay the paving company directly.
Yep.
We do that.
That's the way to do it then.
So 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 what we'd have to have is pavement estimate from company with accompanying escrow trends to the town. Town will hold that, and we also gonna need a date to, when this is gonna be accomplished, so that would be the motion.
And and the other question is, could we get a co- get a co- a guaranteed contract so that all of a sudden they're not coming back saying there's more money?
Yeah, no, we've had subdivisions do that before where the paving company guarantees the paving cost up to a certain date next year.
The the other thing is, you guys, you guys know this, is that now there's gonna be three new houses being put in. It's gonna be a lot of trucking over that road, so you put in a grand new road, and what happens?
Yeah, so we're not saying that you have to do binder and top right away, it just that it has to be paved.
A lot of them. Lot of them do a base coat.
Yeah.
Until the second or last home is completed, and then they do the final coat. Before you get your occupancy permits for the final two.
So so you don't need to put the base and top all at once, but you will need to provide the total cost for base and top to the town?
Actually, under our current street ordinance, we don't require a top coat.
That's what I.
It just says pavement, so you could do a modified mix, two inch.
Yeah, just two inch modified mix, it's better than what they have there now and it it gives them pavement.
Which would cost a lot less money as well.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, all the storage facilities I used to do, we only did that.
I don't wanna, I don't really wanna see it destroyed, you know. What's it all, put in, you you know those heavy trucks, especially you, right? Running over that new pavement.
See, I I I s- I still think you're 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 better off doing, uh, doing binder and top, because that's what that's what all the, we require all the subdivisions.
On a in, yeah, an interior subdivision road, that is the, our standard requirement is like a one and a half, two-inch base and then a one-inch plus finish, so.
I suppose you could do the the, uh, modified on the the Greenbrook and then do the the binder and top on the the section where that.
And, you know, as long as it's not fresh pavement, just driving heavy trucks up it isn't gonna destroy it, it's when you unload excavators on.
Yeah, yeah, make sure you get plywood down.
Yeah, yeah, and that can be done once you get onto the subdivision property.
Yeah.
If all of Greenbrook Lane was paved, just all the heavy equipment gets unloaded once you get on Goodall Drive, Goodell Drive. Just running a heavy truck over the pavement should not destroy it. As long as it's not fresh, as long as it's not fresh, fresh pavement.
Yeah.
That way the town redoes its roads every three, four years.
Two to twenty.
It's gotta be.
Anything else that we need to?
Um, there are a couple other determinations too, but yeah, if you can take a vote on it.
Well, Steve made the motion, I'll second it.
Second, all those in favor, that is unanimous.
Do we gotta kill off the first one we did?
No, we didn't vote the first.
Never carried.
Okay.
Never carried.
Um, one item they asked for a waiver on was a reduction in the margins of the plan. Uh, our ordinance requires a two-inch margin on the left-hand side and a one-inch margin everywhere else. In order to fit the whole property on one sheet, um, they have, I think it's about a half-inch margin on one side and maybe a three-eighths inch margin on all the others, um.
You're storing most of these plans now electronically, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I make a motion, yeah.
Alright, so.
Second. Yeah, so. Made the motion, second.
You made the motion, you seconded it, all those in favor, that is unanimous.
Um, the other other item to discuss, but we haven't got an official waiver on, so you don't have to take action on it, is, uh, they added a note to the plan about off-site fire protection being proposed, but we actually haven't received a waiver request. Um, the two sources of off-site water protection wouldn't qualify for our waivers, so the planning board won't be able to approve those. Um, so the other option is installing sprinklers in the new homes, um, just the homes that are part of the subdivision.
Not not any of these proposed homes?
No.
Okay.
But that's something, you know, to think about for the final, um.
So, I mean, I have a, I have a brook right there.
Yeah, if if.
Yeah, but I don't know, is Greenbrook flooded enough to give adequate waters to fly year round?
Yeah.
It usually flows pretty good, I mean, that would be something the fire chief would have to get out and look at.
Have to get permit, uh, the fire chief would have to say yes.
And you'd have to install a dry hydrant.
It is by my house.
Fire fire chief is not excited about, uh.
No.
Uh, he's looking for for cistern tanks, he's not looking for, uh, open fire ponds anymore, so.
Fire ponds or even dry hydrants in the brooks, he's not so much in favor of those anymore.
No, since you have to buy a new pump, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But to make it clear, this would only be for the new subdivision.
Correct, just for the.
Not the existing lots that are on Greenbrook Lane.
And my house, which is already done.
Yeah, your house, if it doesn't have sprinklers right now, that's something the board would have to consider. Maybe not acquiring on that because you are right on the brook or, you know, it's just something the board would have to discuss, but.
Yeah, we'll have to wait till it comes back with a proposal.
Well, it doesn't look like I have any choice.
What else, Mike?
Yeah, the new houses, yeah, because it's very, I can't think of any options. And then onsite cistern would be very expensive just for four four lots.
Yeah, but even on that side, if his house is already built, I don't see having to add sprinklers to his house that's already built.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, like.
It's almost impossible.
But, right, by the amount of work that would take, it's not even.
Yeah.
But that's something the board doesn't need to deal with at preliminary approval, but to give you a heads up for final approval.
Listen, I got my permit, that was never, you didn't have that, didn't you?
It's only required for subdivision lots, so you're you're not a subdivision lot, until now. But there was a note on the plan that was, the reason why I bring it up is there was a note on the plan that proposed off-site fire protection, but both of those water sources wouldn't qualify for our waiver. But both of those water sources wouldn't qualify for our waiver.
Do we need to do an extension?
Um, yes, in order to write up the preliminary findings of fact for preliminary approval, we'll have to add the condition you voted on. Um, and the waiver that was granted to the findings, um so we recommend that continuing for up to thirty days. Um, I don't think there's any plan changes to make, we got revised plans today from the surveyor, um.
Yeah, I saw you know, uh uh neither one of us got that until yesterday afternoon.
But I think the plans are fine for preliminary approval, we just have to add what you just voted on to the findings.
So I'm making a motion, we continue this for thirty days.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous.
It needs to be back in, you know, two weeks for.
Think you need to get together with all the property owners on the road and see if we can come up with an amicable. Number.
I know some pages, I can get a price for them. And this is only to the end of Greenbrook Lane.
Well, if you're gonna think about later on.
On my part, that what I talked about, not having to pave until the house is built.
And again, that.
Because.
That works to the certain point, you have to put a base down, then you have to put the final. Even on your end. Correct, Mike?
Oh, 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 for a Goodell Road? Um, that only has four lots on it, so that's okay paved, uh gravelled just the way it is. Yeah, that wouldn't be required to be paved at all, it's just Green.
Ever, ever?
Well, unless he adds more lots to it, because there is the the big remaining land lot that can be re-subdivided in the future.
And it'll never be cheaper.
Yeah, it'll never be cheaper than it is now.
Always gonna go up, yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that'll get done, no matter, whatever, no matter what, but.
But you know, that that's something we consider, think about it the next, is putting a note on the plan that it doesn't have to be paved now, but. In the event that, so then that way, if everyone goes back and looks at it when they go to buy a piece of property, to get subdivided again five years down the road. Then it'll be there.
To answer your question, sir, if all that gets done. Yes, you you could issue him a building permit, couldn't they?
If we have performance guarantee funds in place to make sure that the road is gonna be completed. Um, but yeah, the the building permits could be issued on all the lots.
There are two people out there that might have to go, I imagine.
Any other comments this evening, or are we done with this?
No, that's good.
We're all set, sir, for the evening. And I would encourage everybody to get together if they could, see what they can do. Thank you. The next item this evening is Central Industrial Park. Welcome.
Thank you. For the record. My name is Austin Fagan, you're BH two M representing TNN Realty LLC.
Welcome again, Mike, you have comments for us on this?
Um, yes, we uh last review, we just had a couple of minor plan revisions to be made. Um, and they've been made, we received final drawings that added the notes we were looking for, um. And so with with the revised plans given to us, we've asked the board to consider the application as complete.
Second, all those in favor, that is unanimous.
At a previous meeting, the planning board already waived the need for a public hearing, a minor amendment to the plan. Uh, so that's already been voted on and taken care of, um, but with the minor corrections they did to the plan. We'd also ask the planning board to de the application as compliant.
Move that the application is compliant.
Is there a second? Second to that, all those in favor? That is unanimous.
Um, and and this is a an amendment to an existing subdivision, so we don't have to go through every section of the findings of fact. Uh, but those are findings of fact in your packet, under only a couple of bolded items, and as I said, we revised plans that we provided, we took care of those bolded items. Um, so we would recommend the planning board approve the subdivision amendment and assign the plan and findings at the end of the meeting.
Second, all those in favor, that is unanimous. The next item on the agenda is TNN Realty Warehouse Building. Mike, you have comments for us on, well, excuse me, would you like to tell us who you are again? Just in case.
Uh, Austin Fagan, BH two M representing TNN Realty LLC.
Welcome again.
On this one as well, we had some uh plan revisions recommended, and we haven't seen revised plans yet, and that's um. They're, you're still waiting for their DEP permit. So they wanted to come back all at once with the revised plans and DEP permit in hand. Um, so we didn't expect to get revised plans back, um but I I think our comments are all gonna be addressed hopefully. One item on this that the board didn't make a determination before on was that uh the proposed. Um, the proposed facility did not require additional traffic data. They did give us a trip generation, and they previously gave us a turning radius plan that showed. How a tractor trailer and a fire truck can get up along the side of the building and turn and get out. Um, so we got the truck turning radius plan, and they gave us a traffic generation that was fairly low for that type of use. Um, but the board needed to vote to just determine that no additional traffic information was needed.
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous as well.
Um, and as I said, we're waiting for the DEP stormwater permit. Um, we were looking for a draft uh access easement, because this lot is gonna have the right. To cross the abutting parking lot lot as an alternative means in and out. Um, again, provides better truck turning access and fire access potentially, so all good items, but we were looking for. A draft of that easement, we know both lots are owned by the same entity now, uh but if either one ever got sold. We wanted to see that draft language. Doesn't have to be conveyed now because he owns both, but. I think that was the only items we had, everything else would be addressed in a revised note. So we were requesting the planning board to consider a continuance until the DEP permit is approved. Probably plus twenty days.
Do we want thirty or sixty?
Um, well, after the DEP permit is granted, we can usually schedule it within a meeting, for the very next meeting. That's why it's nice to do fifteen or twenty days after DEP approval, that gives us enough time.
So let's let's make it twenty-one, just in case we get one of those oddball weeks, so um. Make the motion to continue until twenty-one days after DEP approval.
Second, second, all those in favor, that is unanimous.
Thank you. One more.
And then the next item is TNN Parking Lot, and for the record, would you like to?
Yes, sir.
State who you are, please.
Austin Fagan, BH two M, here representing TNN Realty LLC.
You had comments on this one, Mike?
Um, yes, on this one as well, we just had some very minor note and labeling changes to make. Um, DEP approval is pending on this as well, because the stormwater from one site going on to the other. Um, we were looking for the planning board to consider finding the application as complete.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous.
Um, on this one, we hold off on deeming it compliant or of course approving it until DEP approval is granted. So we are recommending to the board, similar to the last one, that uh that a continuation be given. Until twenty-one days after DEP approval.
Some move.
Second, all those in favor, that is unanimous.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, have a wonderful night. Next item on the agenda is Brookside Subdivision, and I believe they've asked for an extension.
Um, their their existing extension carries them through for a few more meetings, um they were just hoping to get on, so we put them on the agenda. But then they contacted us and said they weren't ready, so this is just a postponement to a future meeting, but they have, they don't need an extension.
So we don't.
We don't need to act on it at all, correct? Okay. Next on the agenda is other business.
Yes, we had um one staff review committee meeting, I wasn't there for it. Um, but there was one application that was on the agenda for review. That got reviewed and comments given to the applicant for Harbor Side Convenium. Um, and then there were two projects that are before the planning board for review and approval that were also discussed, um. Other than that, we had a list of a new contact list for planning board members, because we have a new planning board member that got appointed by the board of selectmen. Um, I don't know if he's gotten sworn in by the clerk yet, uh but as soon as he does, there'll be an acting alternate member that can join us and. Dive into the planning board batters of all types.
Mike, do you have um status on on uh whose terms up mine?
Uh, yeah, Shannon tracks that. We know that.
It's on the contact list.
It's on the contact?
Is it on the contact list?
Yeah. Say everybody's name. Yours up now.
Well, Josh and I, we're.
No.
Yeah. Two thousand twenty-five.
Oh, okay.
If you want to re-up.
Yeah, because the Buddhist like men will wanna re-interview you and officially.
Have to be interviewed, and then if they accept you, you have to be sworn in again, you're sworn out.
Yeah, so you and Josh vote.
The next on the agenda is.
Um, the flood ordinance again, um so for tonight's meeting, I just. Put together some other fun facts on flood ordinance stuff, and I I copied and highlighted. Some of the FEMA manual and documents that they publish. And um the goal would be, I think, for the board to schedule that that joint meeting or or. Invite the code office to come at the next meeting, um.
Are they gonna be able to make it this time, because I thought they were gonna be here this time?
Yeah, someone was on vacation, so that didn't work out.
I think we had a, I think we have some people here that are interested in in this, so I think they're a little disappointed that the. We've talked about the code office being here and they're not.
Yeah, if they were gonna be here, we would have had it special on the agenda. Um, but one thought was to have it as a special session between like six and seven o'clock before our next meeting, um.
I might be able to get a pardon.
I can try to get it, too.
There there are a couple.
For si- for six o'clock.
For six o'clock, yeah, so we'd have a special workshop, start the meeting at six, and then from six to seven would just be flood ordinance, we'd have the code office here. We'd have um hopefully another specialist in the area, an insurance specialist here as well.
I believe this one in the audience now.
Oh, yeah, he's here tonight.
I guess not to cut you off, Steve. Do you still need an answer on sooner rather than later?
Well, just as directional from the board, I mean, I've compiled two different ways we could do with.
Is it easier if we give you an answer now, so we can stop kinda, so we can focus on one way?
I mean, it it might be helpful for the workshop at the next meeting, and then make that final, you know, decision as a board, but.
I- is it everyone okay with saying which way you're leaning, so that way we can start heading down that path? Because I feel as though the last couple of times, you've kinda just been going around in a circle, we still don't have that direction.
So I mean, I'm 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 looking towards the the five year, because that's what Agunkwit has. I'm still waiting to hear back from um Agunkwit, for some reason their um. Building or planning offices is only open two days a week.
Oh, I think they sub it out to Southern Regional, so yeah, they don't have full-time staff there.
Yeah, yeah, so um Monday and Fridays are the the days and and uh. Haven't uh haven't heard back from them yet, so um, you know, I was just interested in their reasoning as to why they chose the five years. So I'm hoping that by the next meeting I'll be able to have that.
Alright, and I'm okay with waiting, I just, again, kinda wanna, I feel as though we keep on talking about the same stuff. Cause we're, I have this bad feeling we're gonna start be talking about between maintenance and actual improvements very shortly.
Well, the my big question is, is it it has to be some way we can say that if a house hasn't been destroyed. From flooded damage, that you you gotta give them a break, I mean, people.
Well, that's some of the sections that I highlighted right out of the FEMA.
I know.
It specifically says you cannot do that.
It's good, but there's gonna be some way, I mean, it's it's not fair to people that are not really in flood zones, that the state has said they're in a flood zone and that's it.
Well, they they can go through a Loma.
It'd cost you almost as much for the Lomair as it will cost you to raise the house.
No, no.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, it's expensive.
I had a customer who spent over fifty thousand dollars getting a Loma.
Fifty thousand a Loma? I mean, I used to do them, and I never charged anywhere close to that.
I'm telling you, I know a property in in York that cost thirty-five thousand to get it out of the flood zone, and it was on a hill.
Those are the easy ones.
Yeah, thirty-five grand by the time they were done with all the paperwork.
Is it in a V-zone of some type? These zones are different.
That's it, it was in a flood zone and and you you it it didn't flood, there's no doubt about it.
So so what I'm talking about, that it was an AO on Eldridge, and again, it was over by the church. Which is not in the flood zone, but Eldridge Road is higher than the finished floor of the church and isn't a flood zone, so. It, you know, I understand what Dave's saying, a lot of these make no sense.
It's the paperwork, it's what, or the expense of it. So I I mean, there's gotta be some way, I mean, I understand it needs to be uh floodproofed. But it's there's just some people that just can't afford it, and what you're gonna see is houses, nothing being done to them.
And you you you, and I I think you've seen that already, if you look at the amount of construction that's going on in Beach versus a year ago, it's nothing. I mean, no one's doing anything down there, and it it, you know, the driving force is the actual event itself. The 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 storm that happened in January. The people that that said, that's it, I've had enough, I'm raising my house, okay? It's not any ordinance that's gonna that's gonna that's gonna force people to do it, unless you're handing out three hundred thousand dollar checks, you're not gonna. You're not gonna force people to do it. Now, that being said, there is a program that our town doesn't involve in. It's a grant program through FEMA, that you can get grants for your community to help assist with raising. Um, houses, and for some reason we don't participate in, I think there's only a couple towns in Maine that do.
There were some, there were some homes after the storm that did get grants, they weren't for very much, but. I know some of the grants we got notice of, we weren't involved with. It was the private property owners submitting to FEMA, and they were, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand, you know.
But thi- this is, this is a, this is a program that helps with low interest loans and and just outright grants. And I know one of the problems that I find with FEMA, and and I've dealt with FEMA tremendously over the past two years. Is that every time you talk with someone, you get a different answer, and it doesn't matter what it says in here. It's it's what that person on the other end of the phone tells you, and that's unfortunate. So a- again, I guess I'm saying that I'm I'm leaning towards the the five, primarily because Agunkwit, our Agunkwit, our neighbor, has chosen five. And uh I'm just waiting to hear back from them as to as to why they've chosen the five.
Do we know what some of the other towns have done?
Most of them are at ten.
Yeah, I think Sue Baker from the State Flood Plane Ordinance has said that too, most most are at ten. And you know, it for, you know, the the workshop, if we set it up, uh you know, at six at the next meeting, um it's not a public hearing. So, I mean, not every one of the rooms is gonna be allowed to speak, it would be the code office, the invitee that happens to be here tonight. And the board having a discussion on it, it wouldn't be an open to the public situation, but.
But people.
People welcome to come and listen.
They can listen, but they can also correspond through the office of planning and development.
Mike likes to get emails.
And yeah, we got one just today that I put on the table in front of you.
Haven't had a chance to read it.
No, I haven't had a chance to read it, but it looked like there were actually some good things.
So do we wanna plan on the next meeting at six?
So I make a motion that we'll start the next meeting at six P M.
Do we wanna check and see if the invited guests can attend?
Checking his count.
Checking his phone right now.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna schedule anybody that can't be here.
So that's November seventeenth, I think. So that's November seventeenth, I think, for the.
So, wanna make a motion of that, please, sir?
Yep, so make the motion that, uh, we begin the next meeting November seventeenth at six P M. And the invited guest will be Bob Foley.
To discuss?
To discuss insurance ramifications and the FEMA flood rules.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous. Unfortunately, we can't discuss any more of it tonight, but we will at our next meeting. And everyone is welcome to attend.
And you're also welcome to send your comments in because.
But if you have something. Yeah, I was gonna say, if you have something to comment, send it in to the Office of Planning and Development in advance, please.
And whatever you send in, I'll copy and provide to the planning board so they all get a copy. I recommend too going online to our previous agendas, but I've done a few different memos for the workshops we've had. And had attached documents from building codes and this week FEMA rules. And you can access all of those from the website. If you go to the agendas, if if it's highlighted in blue, you can click on it and then see all the documents.
So we're all set with that for the evening. Thank you very much for coming. Sorry that we didn't get to it or you weren't notified that we wouldn't be hearing it this evening.
So.
Um, so we need to, we assigned, but we're all set for everything else, yes?
Mike, is there any, there was a comment there about scheduling ordinances for, um, few.
Oh, that was just if you thought of any others. At the last meeting, we discussed, um, street ordinance.
Yeah.
Which is timely with the one we're just looking at. Uh, short-term rentals, timbering, uh, subdivision clarification on minor versus major. And then, yeah, the only reason why I put it on the agenda is if you had thought of any others that you wanna target for you.
So so road standards would be in there?
Yes, that goes along with streets. Because the the last time we looked at streets that we just changed not too long ago. We talked about creating an approval process for private streets and some other changes to it.
Good night, gentlemen.
You know, to base things on dwelling units versus lots, except the board had a question on how many lots it would affect. And we were gonna do an analysis, looking at existing private streets and seeing how many lots might be affected by it. So the last street ordinance that we worked on a quick before the voters was a little truncated versus what we started looking at.
Yeah.
Um, but now the, you know, we have more issues come up with it, and we can do that analysis of how many lots might be impacted. That have, uh, bring it back for discussion. Yeah.
Just.
Because the the case we work on tonight is a perfect example.
Yeah.
If there was some form of approving that private street, and and the, and what we proposed before was to have staff review committee. Because it's fire, police, public works, all in the same room, and those are the perfect people to review a a new street.
Yeah.
So.
And 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 I know the 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 biggest thing now is is to get away from any of the the, um, having streets be dirt roads. Uh, and I mean, we had talked about over a certain length, it's gotta be, it's gotta be paved, which which is important. And that's, uh, I mean, that's, the the EPA several years ago has has started this thing about controlling dust. And it's finally making it to the DEP, so it's gonna be one of these things that's gonna be, um, mandated in the future, so, you know. So.
But see, that's a perfect example where where they went around the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Street, uh, lot by lot by lot, and then now they're in here for a bigger subdivision and, you know.
If there was some form of a street, private street approval.
Yeah.
That gets approved by the town and recorded, then anyone buying a lot on that street would have something they could look at and see what it's supposed to be.
We need something like that because those poor people, those poor people, I mean.
Yeah, you need to have have something that says that, you know, a a minor subdivision, a three-lot subdivision. Whether it goes through subdivision or it's a a a family split or the new rule that you could split up to four beforehand. Once you hit three or four lots have to be paved. You know, that's that I can agree on, because now you're talking, you know, there's seven people there and two can't do anything.
Yeah, and Kidery's had a private street approval process, I think Saco has one too. But I've experienced with Kidery, and and that's been in place for like thirty years. And so even if the lots being created doesn't trigger a subdivision by state law, they still have an approval process for any private street.
Yeah, no, but I mean, but we have to take into consideration of what what it costs to do the road and and, you know. Where there's a point where it, you know, you won't get any family splits if you if you if you have them so small, and that's, you know, that's the problem.
The other factor is LD eighteen twenty-nine, that we have two years to look at and.
Yeah.
And they're allowing, you know, three or four dwelling units on each lot. So the way the ordinance is written now, it's by lot versus by dwelling, and because of it, LD eighteen twenty-nine, we really gotta revisit dwelling.
Have to change that to dwelling.
Yeah. But again, they don't, they can't afford, they can't force anybody for the number of parking spaces. How can we, how can we afford to force them to pay?
Well, they gotta park somewhere.
Then there'll be a new state law that comes out of Augusta that says we can't require payment.
Can't require payment, that'll be the next thing.
Any other business?
Make a motion to adjourn, sign plans at the end of the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous. Good night, everyone.
Great.
Thank you.